Oh, there he is. Perfect timing. Hello, counselor. I'm just like. Yep. It's been stressful.
It's just the projector. Oh, okay.
Okay. All right. We're gonna go ahead and bring our city council work session to order for this Monday, July 8th, 2024. Uh, let's see here. I'll go ahead and read the purpose of the meeting and then Stevie, we're gonna say one thing before we dive in. So the purpose of this council work session is for general discussion of issues facing the city of Monroe. This is a public and open work session and a quorum of the city council is expected. We are here. But this work session, there is no public hearing and there are no decisions being rendered tonight. So with that, Steve, I'll have you make your note.
Just very quick, this is for those folks online, we have a projector here that does not like our heat for some reason. So it will go out for the city council here. They won't be able to see all the faces and the names up here. But you should be able to see the councils and listen to the conversations.
Okay, I guess we'll go ahead and dive right into the agenda. So the first item on our work session agenda is the library IGA. And Ashley Chavez is here. And Ashley, you had sent us a memo, looks like Friday? And so we all have a copy of it. And we've all read through it. What questions does the city council have for Ashley?
So there's like a ballpark. Costs on services through Benton County. What would, what would be, what would the timeline look like actually getting more solid number? I mean, it looks like. There's an approximate, but I don't know what the scope of that is or the context or.
Yeah, so I think one thing that would be helpful for me to understand is what your current costs are and whether or not the adopted budget reflects your current costs. So that way we understand, are we talking about any significant kind of savings to pursue? Getting a more detailed quote? Is that what you want to do? I'm happy to help with any of that. I also wanna, you know, respect your city administrators role in terms of administrative work. I don't want to be stepping in his lane, you know, forgetting numbers. And so I'm happy to help however you need it. Benton County was able to get me the numbers pretty quickly. And it seemed like ballpark would be a good starting place, just to see like, what are we talking about? I really had no clue what to expect. So now that we've got this, if you're able to compare that to, you know, your, your actual numbers or your projected numbers for the upcoming fiscal year, and think it makes sense to dive into a deeper quote, then, you know, be happy to facilitate that.
I have, I have a comment and a question. I just would like to say first off, thank you so much for attending our work session. It means a great deal to us. Nobody on this city council, I think I speak for everybody, is interested in losing the library. We all want to do whatever we can to come to a sustainable equitable partnership, so we can move this path forward. With that being said, I do have a couple of questions in your memo. And I want to preface this by saying this is not meant to be adversarial. Sometimes when I ask questions, I feel like it can be perceived that way, and that is not what I intend. But this is kind of what I do for a living. I audit and regulatory compliance and federal compliance. So I read a lot of plans and a lot of systems and I ask a lot of questions. The first question I have is around the janitorial through Benton County. Where you say, based on the minimum scope of cleaning, I'd like to better understand what that minimum of scope was and how you came about identifying what the scope was.
Yeah, so I went with the idea of what is the absolute, you know, kind of lowest bar we could set for custodial and then figure we could go up from there. So what I had them quoted at was two days a week for cleaning the bathrooms, you know, vacuuming, mopping. You know, kind of basic janitorial work, but nothing in depth like, you know, dusting of the whole library and, and that sort of thing. I also think two days a week really is the minimum. But I think if it's timed appropriately, then, you know, combined with staff like restocking toilet paper and, and minor things that I think are, are easy to do within the scope of what staff can do, then that would be a workable solution. And then, you know, as always with libraries, sometimes you have events or, you know, unexpected messes that you kind of have to deal with and that, that sort of is then an additional cost a lot of times to get someone to come out, an emergency clean, but that doesn't happen very often in Monroe.
Okay, and so it's two times a week for cleaning. Do you know about how many hours?
Yeah, this was based on five.
Five hours.
And.
Twice a week.
And travel.
Okay, so five hours, actually 10 hours per week. Okay. Plus travel. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. That just helps me understand.
Totally, yeah. Happy to help.
The second question I have, and bear with me, I am not an accountant, so you have to.
Sure. I'm happy to, I'm happy to walk through the numbers. It was hard to, one of those things is kind of hard to explain in writing sometimes, so I'm happy to talk through it with you.
So when you say it's fiscal year 2425 Benton County Library Service District revenue and it's 3.6 million, is that the revenue from the library district funds that's referenced in the summary where you say approximately 70% of the revenue?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, you're reading that correctly.
Okay. Then perhaps maybe you can elaborate on what you're saying the 70% is coming from. Because when I do the math, now, like I said, I'm not a mathematician. That would be my daughter. I don't come up with 70% in any of the scenarios outlined, and that would be great if you could kind of walk me through that.
Sure, so I'm, when I'm talking about the 70%, I'm talking about population, right? So.
It's a 70% of the revenue.
Right, so it's kind of like I stated earlier, right? It's, it is hard to, oh, 70% of the revenue from the library service district funds? That's because you're not seeing, I've tried to pull out here for you. Extensions and then Monroe specific. So when I'm talking about the 70%, I'm talking about the, the 1.8 million at the top.
So when I do the math, 1.8 to the 3.6 comes out to 50.6%.
Okay, I, I have some additional spreadsheets, so I can go back and take a look and see if I, if I misstated. Yeah, I may have misstated a number, absolutely. So I can go back to my spreadsheets and take a look at that.
I would, I would appreciate it. I think that's important because later on in that same paragraph, you go on to say that the library services IGA between Benton County and the city of Corvallis targets to service district tax base to provide funding for approximately 30 to 40% of the Corvallis library's expenses with a goal of reaching 40%. Like, I think that we're kind of not far from that currently.
Yeah, we're, we're not, within, as long as it's within 30 to 40%, then we're meeting the IGA's goals. And especially if, if, you know, there's a misstated number in here, I'm closer to, you know, 39% then. Yeah, we're, we're right within that target.
Okay. We actually have some, some room to, from my mathematical calculations, some room to, to work with that then. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
So the goal, the, like, the IGA written in 94 had the goal of reaching 40%. If you read through the whole, you know, I've just kind of pulled out a sentence here or there for you. So if you kind of read the, the entire document with the context, it was really written the way it was with the intent to, to hold the county to fully levying the tax base, not, and to not under levy, with the hope that it would eventually reach that 40%. So the goal is to get there, but to be anywhere in the range of 30 to 40. But, but absolutely, if you read the whole thing, they really want to be as close to 40% as possible. But, you know, I think the difficult thing about that IGA and reading those, that intent is that was before measures 5 and 50 were passed, and so the expected growth rate of the, of that tax base was 6%. And of course, it's capped at three. So I think the growth that they hope to see and reach it re for, I mean, they were thinking if you read through the IGA that they might reach 40% within 10 years.
Okay.
And so, you know, here we are many, many years later and still just kind of in that range.
Okay. Um, could you also maybe elaborate on some of these buckets for extension services? I asked for clarification on each category, like, what is the difference between admin services and staffing? Like, how would I delineate or account for those? Where are those being accounted for in these categories?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the staffing category specifically are, is employees that directly work in the branch libraries or maybe provide delivery, that kind of, you know, delivery services throughout the whole service district. Administrative services, however, would be payroll, paying invoices, HR, finance staff, you know, city manager's office. All, all sorts of things kind of within that realm.
It's more county.
County.
City, like.
Oh, yeah, so it's, it's what the library has to pay to receive those services from the city. Yeah. So it doesn't include, like, for example, my time, you know, that's, that's not charged to extensions anywhere. This kind of goes back to this being an imperfect, you know, model to, to a sense. It's more of just trying to kind of get us closer to showing at least some of the numbers and giving us a ballpark. Yeah, so that admin piece is more focused on the services that the city of Corvallis provides to the library by, you know, running payroll and all of those kinds of things.
Okay, well, I appreciate your, your clarification. It helps me for context. I, I need a lot of context apparently in my life.
Yeah, it's okay. Do you want me to go through the other categories at all or just that one specifically?
Yeah, if you, if you could, but I also have one thing that I'd like to go on record is that in your, in your memo from Friday, you did say that at the Monroe City Council Special Meeting on June 26th, we requested several pieces of information. All of the pieces of information that were requested at that city council meeting were actually requested in the April meeting that, that we had with you. So this has been, this information, this exchange of information has been requested for far longer than what is stated in this memo. And I just wanted that to go on record.
Okay, I, I totally hear you and I, I had felt like that conversation was about what we wanted in the, in the annual report moving forward, because I had said, you know, what kind of information do you want in the annual report? And so that was my understanding of the, the information. And as for the, you know, some of this janitorial through Benton County, that was, wasn't even an option we knew about. So I really apologize if that was your request and you felt like it wasn't heard.
Yeah, and if you, we could do a deeper dive into the categories. I don't know if any of the other council members would think that would be beneficial.
I can do something really high level, and then if you want me to kind of talk about any of them anymore, let me know. So risk management, that's covering things like our insurance that we need to pay. So for example, like cybersecurity insurance and, you know, all, all sorts of things like that. Or car insurance, you know, anything that might fill, fall in that range. It also includes workers comp, you know, any, anything that might fall within that category. So there's that. IT services is, you know, fairly self-explanatory, but we do have a, a large. You know, and I think to some extent, you know, when you think computers in library, you kind of go to, oh, you know, there's, there's the public computers available, the people and the staff computer, and that's not too much. But then there's sort of, you know, the network and the protection of our data, and we deal with a lot of very sensitive information, right? People's names and addresses and all sorts of things. So it's important that all of that's protected. So includes all of that, plus, you know, they're the ones running our financial software. And I mean, you, I could just go on for a while. The IT encompasses a lot more than, and then certainly you'd expect software and equipment. That is focused on things that we need as a system to work. So for example, right, like any of the.
Inner library loan.
Not inner library loan actually, but it include, it would be like the actual computer system, the cost of the software that, right, we use to check out materials and have an online catalog. It's our website hosting. It's, you know, we actually have a lot of programs that we need to use as staff and that we make available to patrons.
It's under library collections?
Yeah, so that, the patron-specific ones would be under library collections. But a lot of the ones that we need to use just to run our libraries are in that, along with general equipment that needs to get shared across the system. Library collections, again, these are all a percentage of a larger pie, right? So library collections is the one I, as I pointed out in my example, I think is perhaps one of the most challenging ones since it's a shared collection. But that's our digital, in, uh, physical items and then also any of our online resources that we make available to patrons, like databases or learning educational type offerings. And then contribution to our vehicle reserve. So as you know, we have a fleet of vehicles and use those for, you know, transferring items around to different branches. For a long time, we had a bookmobile. That's now an outreach vehicle. We do delivery. And so instead of trying to figure out, you know, the, the piece of the pie that you would pay per vehicle, which I think it's really sticky, I was thinking it just makes more sense to put in the contribution to a vehicle reserve, staffing, supply services, we already talked about that. And then the cost of running delivery, so fuel, vehicle maintenance, that kind of thing.
I have a clarifying question, and maybe this is what you're asking Counselor Williams, but I might, I maybe, maybe not, maybe I misunderstood. So the Monroe plus 1% of extension services, what is the 1% of extension services referencing? Is that the 1.85 million above?
Yes, yes, it is.
So when I do the math of 383, 560, the Monroe specific expenses plus 1% of the 1.8, it comes out to about 402, not 418, so it seems like there's a $16,000 difference.
Okay, I'll have to go take a look back at that. I have a, like I said, I'm, this is more of a really tiny little spreadsheet. I had a much larger one that I was working from. And I was trying to make sure that Monroe isn't like being double counted. So for example, like the extension services expenses, I'll have to double check, but I'm pretty sure the staffing up here includes Monroe staff. So I wanted to make sure to not double count that, so like that's taken out of the equation. So that might account for the difference. I'd have to go back and look, but I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Eve, what's our current? I know we have, so is it 2.5 FTE or what's the, that we have for public works? I know it's kind of split between.
It is a split throughout the.
I know it's split between the funds.
There's 2.5 FD in public works. And then there's a portion of the accounting specialist time in there as well, and a little bit of my time.
But the, basically, so and obviously utility workers mostly do.
So in the system, you'll see there's a grounds and facilities worker. Okay, and that is charged to the buildings. Okay, so, so that's the person that would be responsible to take care of the library, the janitorial pieces of all the buildings, including the library. Utility workers are responsible for things such as equipment issues, like going in and taking care, calling contractors, doing the physical maintenance of the structure rather than the care and cleaning of the structure. So that's why they're a bit in there. My time in public works is mostly because there's a portion of what I do that goes into some of the other fields, not necessarily the library.
And currently, we're, we work contracting with an individual that was.
We have, we have a temporary, yeah, we have Ron Hocke, who's our, a temporary to do grounds and facilities. In addition, you know, as separate from the park host activities. So he does things like he'll get on the lawnmower and mow the park. He also takes care of the library and this building and city hall.
Is he, is he looking to continue?
He would like to, yes.
At an employee level, obviously.
He is, yes, we, we budgeted this year to make that a, a, a permanent halftime position. And he has experience as in facilities management of hospitals and that type of thing.
How much time has he been able to?
He typically spends about three and a half to four hours on Mondays, because the library is not staffed on Mondays, and about two hours a day thereafter. Two, two, two to three, it, it just depends if there's events, activities, you know, the night day before, he might have to do a little more cleaning. But that's, that's in general.
And then the 12,000 that we have under the library is for the longer, the bigger.
The bigger contracted. Right, exactly. And there's no RFPs, there's been no anything for that. That is an estimate based upon the janitorial staff that came down and helped me with understanding what was required. This would be the high-level dusting, window cleaning. There's a lot of high levels in the library, I mean, tall areas that are, would not be easy to get to. So, so that's what, that's more the deep cleaning that would be periodic, probably twice a year.
And you'd have to have special equipment and training to do that.
Yes, you would, and rug cleaning and all, all those things. The floor maintenance, that type of things.
All the safety requirements.
Right.
And my understanding is some of his ability is limited physically. Is that, or, um, for Ron? Doesn't he have some physical limitations or maybe he did a year ago?
There, there's nothing, yeah, he had some, he had some things, but that, that was temporary.
Okay, got it.
You know, just like my poor nose is temporary.
I wasn't clear on that.
No, that's okay. That was, that was, you'd appreciate this. That was Mishka.
Okay.
But, but Ron, but Ron, I'll just, I'm sorry, Counselor, I just want to, he, he is fully capable of doing the janitor, basic janitorial work.
Got it, okay, yeah.
So is there not an issue with the budget as it sets and being able to do? I mean, is that sufficient time for?
I mean, what I can do is, and I promised Ashley, I promised Ashley I would break the numbers out for her. I just have not had yet, getting the budget done was, we're finishing that up. But I can break the numbers out on my spreadsheet as to how much time we actually allocated for that, and that would give the exact numbers. I mean, I can break it right down to.
Yeah, and I'm just wondering if, if that's sufficient or if.
We were advised, I was advised, that the amount of time in the library is about three to four hours a day. If you wanted to do the kind of cleaning that was more detailed than what we currently do. That, that a professional janitorial staff would recommend in an RFP, if they were to come down and say, here's what we needed to do. Our work is really, and I would say probably the same as Benton County's offer. It's probably just exactly that. It's minimal stuff. The issue though is the restrooms. If you're, Ron's class to clean the restrooms each and every day, and the same with the park. I mean, it's, it's, that's his probably most labor intensive, because they are public restrooms and they do get used. And sometimes not maybe intentionally, but, but you understand. Sorry. So he does spend time doing that. And if it were to be every other day or two day a week, things, people would complain. I mean, that's just the way it would be, because they have in the past. When we had the evening, we, when I first started here, but it was COVID, we had a, a nice lady who came in, did the schools, but came in and spent a few hours in the evening. And that was okay, but we still had complaints, even though the library was, was, you know, the, the traffic in the library wasn't very much.
So the, the bathrooms are more the issue than the?
The bathrooms are, not an issue, I would say, but it's what takes, he spends.
Most of the time.
Time doing that. The other thing is, is that you also need to sweep down all the floors. The cracks, because of the way the meeting rooms, if you look down to this, this is the original, it's actually fir decking, it's beautiful. But you'll see that they've shrunk a little bit and there's cracks in between. I said, well, should you caulk them? He says, no, but you do have to vacuum them. And that has to be more than just once every six months. That should be a more periodic, maybe once a week to even, and you can imagine taking each of the cracks and running a vacuum along it is going to be a little bit more time consuming. That we are currently not doing. We have not done, we're just doing a wipe down and an occasional mop on it, which is prescribed for those kind of floors. But you really do need to vacuum the cracks and give that little bit more deep cleaning to it. Excuse me, I don't want to use the word deep cleaning. A little bit more attention on a periodic basis to that.
So is it, it, it sounds like we have the budget to continue what Ron is doing, just not, we don't have the budget for Ron to do beyond that. That's pretty much, that's.
That is, that is pretty much it. I mean, given the time, I mean, he does, he's really given halftime work here. He spends another two hours a day minimum at the park. And that's what his, you know, that's what we asked him to do and he has a, you know, we trade his space for that, and that's perfectly okay. But basically, he can sometimes suspend a full eight-hour day. And if we add the lawn mower, because we don't have our, the utility person right now, he has a full day. He started this morning at 5:00 AM.
So would it be, is, is it a possibility to, so what I'm hearing is the day-to-day stuff that, that way I think about things sometimes, I don't know if everybody else thinks about them. I think my brain works a little bit wildly, so apologize. But for my job, I have to go look at sanitation schedules. I have to make sure that all for facilities, right? And they have daily tasks, those are daily tasks, and I think that's what Ron is kind of doing, those daily.
Doing the daily tasks, the checklist of daily tasks.
The higher level sanitation, that happens on a set frequency. Can we determine what that set frequency is and then communicate that to Ms. Chavez? And then we can get an RFP from the county based on what our needs currently are and understanding what the hours that Ron, what we currently have budgeted.
That's perfect, because Ron has done that professionally for many years. So we should be able to get a nice list, in addition to the list that I received from the janitorial group that came and visited. They gave me a list as well.
Okay. Because not every task needs to be done every day, like.
Absolutely not, no.
It's like vacuuming is maybe every quarter or something, right?
Vacuuming the cracks doesn't have to happen every day. It just needs to happen periodically.
Be on a schedule though.
Periodically.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have to determine whether that's weekly or monthly.
Right, based upon what the professionals would say, and also based upon the condition, some of it is, is based upon what activities have gone on in the room. If you have several dances or whatever, with lots of people in the room, it's going to create more activity that you have to clean up. If you have, you know, some like activities, like squishtivities, you know, or things of that nature, which might be more messy, then you might have a great deal of cleanup to do. So those are the things that are, are more contextual to the kinds of activities that are going on as they are with any organization. Having a room full of folks here is a lot different than when it's crickets, so.
Do we have the tools to do the high spaces?
No, absolutely not. Never have.
I didn't think we did.
You think, I think you need like a big extended, like.
Well, not only that, if you, if you, if you go up on the ground, if you're six feet up, you have to have fall protection on.
Yeah, and so, or have a scissors lift or something that has a railing on it.
Even with a scissors lift, you have to have fall protection.
If it has railings, OSHA's.
Yes, it do.
I don't remember.
Oh, no, no.
Twenty years ago.
If you read OSHA.
Twenty years ago, I'll tell you.
All right.
That's fine. I know, because I, I've had to deal with it.
Okay.
It's not a, it's, it's a, called a restraint, not a fall protection at that point.
Okay, it's not fall protection, because fall protection is.
It's like, you're just.
You have to wear a harness, you have to wear a harness or a belt in a, in a cage. But if you're out, not in a cage, you have to wear a full-body harness. I used to be a territory manager selling safety products through the 80s and 90s. So, yeah, it's been there for a long time. And I know people who've been put in wheelchairs because they had their fall protection and the equipment still failed. So yeah, we have to have, we, safety is number one.
Well, it doesn't, it, we are not going to be up there doing.
No, but I mean, we gotta make sure our contractor has that too.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I, you know, we and Benton County would probably be the deep pockets if anything happened with a contractor.
So Steve, oh, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
Thank you. So going off of what Counselor Williams just said with the RFP process, how would that go out to Benton County or would we go outside? Like, I mean, what, what is the next step? Because it sounds like we need professional contractors to come in and make up the difference that Ron is not able to do with our budget.
Well, in those particular instances, we would go out for an RFP with a scope of work.
Okay.
Would we, based upon, based upon the standards for the kind of building that it is, not just any building. It would need to be to the standards of that, that is a special building. So it would need to be that, to that standards. And then people would come in and we would actually probably do, they would need to give a proposal, so they would get a walkthrough. And they would have to then come back and write up how they propose to do that and what the cost of that. how they propose to do that and what the cost of that service would be.
Would we be able to garner any purchasing power by working with Benton County and the Library District for that?
Can I just add a little clarity to the suggestion? I mean, the RFP is absolutely a tool that you have there. And I think what Benton County suggested and Rick Crager can speak more to this. And he actually said he'd be happy to come to your next meeting. I invited him to come to this one. He just wasn't available. He'd be very happy to come to your next meeting. Well, the one that the next one, we discussed the library IGA. But I believe what he was suggesting was actually saying, you know, we already have our contractor go to Monroe to clean or like pass through Monroe for cleaning the health centers. So if we added like speaking as we Benton County, if Benton County added on the Monroe Library to their contract, it might be one save you the administrative time and cost of going out for an RFP. And then it might be cheaper if, say, they're already traveling to somewhere in Monroe and then could stop and clean the library along the way. So I think what he was suggesting was that it could literally be added to Benton County's contract, and then they could just say, hey, here's your portion of the invoice. Pay it. I don't want to put words in his mouth. That was that was the way certainly the way I understood it. So that way it would give you a little bit more purchasing power and potentially be cheaper because, you know, one of the hard things I think I find this in LC all the time is, you know, trying to find some company who's willing to travel out to LC is you know, the costs get really astronomical. So I think he was thinking they're already on their way here. You might get it. You might get a discount.
Mobility and demo cost are the part of the biggest part of it, especially with gas prices.
Do other branches have a contractor go to their site? And if so, do they pay for that or just Benton County?
So every building owner is the the way the various IGs are set up is every building owner is responsible for the for their own janitorial. And so everyone handles it a little differently. For quite some time, Philomath had an in-house person who did it until literally just this year. And then decided to contract that service out. So that's how they have it now. And similar to you, they have to clean multiple buildings in Philomath, not just the library, you know, they got their city hall and their police station and fire station, etc. In LC, because they're a nonprofit and they don't have an incorporated city to, you know, kind of work with, the what they've done is worked closely with the school districts. So that way the custodian who's there cleaning the school district pops over to the library for a little bit. And then they've kind of worked out a deal with them to kind of help lower their costs.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Question.
Oh, I, as we were talking through something about dances got mentioned. And then before, when you were talking about figures in the beginning, you were talking about insurance and so it occurs to me that there's the the library has allowed different people to come in and use the facility for different events or whatever. How does that work for insurance? Because if the city owns the building and nobody's got insurance, like if you have an event, you have to be insured to be in there, right? And so how how does that work that the library can just kind of decide what's going to go on there? But if it's supposed to be city property, how does all that insurance stuff work? Can I just that confused me a little bit. I'm sorry.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Are we talking about outside rentals of the room or library programs?
Well, that's what I'd like to know because I know that I think there was a school dance and I don't understand how that's a library program.
It's right. It's not.
So how did that happen? And there was no insurance and no knowledge of that. So I to me, that makes me just a little bit nervous insurance wise.
Yeah. So what I can say from a library perspective, before having a library sponsored event. And let's say there was an injury that happened, you know, a kid falls and, you know, tripped on a chair leg and parents say, you know, hey, library that, you know, I mean, our in this, the insurance that we have through the library is what would you know, take care of that issue for an outside rental. Staff are supposed to, you know, abide by the policy that the city of Monroe has set. And if, you know, we're not doing that, then, you know, like I shared at the last meeting, you know, let us know and we can you know, kind of figure out where the miscommunication is and and resolve that. The dance specifically, I think, was just a miscommunication because there was a resolution, I think, in 2021 or 2022 to allow the, I think this might have been because of COVID. There was a resolution to allow them to use the room for free. And I think staff thought that was like an oh, you know, this event that happens annually is free. But I think maybe council's intent was one time. So I think, you know, that particular instance was a miscommunication. That's not to say it isn't a good question that we need to look into.
I just think, yeah.
I feel like the
clarification, just so that everybody's covered. I mean, that's
But yeah, I feel like the city of Monroe's policy is what.
I do have a follow on to that, if you don't mind me asking, Dean. Say you have a library sponsored event. And let's just say the child didn't get hurt, but let's say there's some damage. They broke some windows. What's that going to be covered under?
Off the top of my head, I'd have to read through our IGA to see if it mentions anything specifically, but yeah, I I don't feel comfortable answering because I don't know that. I don't know the answer right off the top of my head.
It's okay. We just.
Yeah.
That just might be something we need to look at.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because I think that's important for everybody to make sure that they're.
I mean, I understand the injury part. I mean, that's devastating, but then there's also damage, you know.
Yeah, I know. In the past, there was at one point, like I think a lamp post was damaged and.
Think a brick at the fireplace.
I think, yeah. And I think in that instance, I think the patron was like charged because it was intent, like not when it wasn't intentional, but you know, it was their fault. And so that's the only other instance I can kind of remember where we had like some structural damage. And then in that case, the person paid. So I'll have to look into it and get an answer back to you. I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, I mean, because si- since we're responsible, you know, taking care of capital improvements and everything that too. You know, if there was some major damage.
I I feel like well, I I won't speak to. I'll look into it before giving an answer because I'm not 100% sure.
In the worst case, and we're in kind of the weather to talk about it. God forbid, somebody starts a fire. And I could just see that being a.
Yeah, now that is in the IGA. I don't have a printed copy of the IGA with me. I could take a look at it, but
That's okay.
Steve, you might recall, I believe it has, I think, city of Monroe is responsible for the insurance on the building for something like a fire.
The insurance on the building itself is responsibly at the city of Monroe.
For the fire, but what if there's injuries in that fire?
It would, if there were injuries in that fire, it would be
City Monroe.
City Monroe. So what we don't have, we we used to have, but I do not have a current certificate of insurance with Monroe as named insured. And that's something we should have. Our CIS was our insurance carrier has required us to do that. I do not know if a city of Corvallis uses CIS. You probably are big enough to, you know, broker your own insurance, but we're covered under the small cities policies and we they want us to have that on file.
I think we probably should be sure staff are clear on what that exception to the policy was. I because I was thinking back to COVID when we were kind of waiving fees for rentals in our spaces. And I I think that had to have been a misunderstanding because I believe that we were allowing nonprofits to rent a space at a discounted rate, maybe, or or something like that. But it I I just want to make sure that library staff are up to date on what the policy actually is because I I don't think that we ever would have approved an eighth grade school dance at
So ju- just for information, we found out it was actually due to the mayor needing to use that for the festival. And then that's how we found out it wasn't on any schedules or anything. So we called the school, worked it out with them. They provided us a certificate of insurance.
Oh, good. Great.
Okay, so and and all that. So, you know, and they filled out our forms and, you know, and left everything reasonable. So.
And and that's just my it doesn't matter. I'm just trying to undo the spaghetti because for me, I'm an event person and I also do audits. So I I feel that same thing, but it's like you want to make sure that the proper things are in place because we have a great resource. And we definitely don't want to leave that unprotected. We want to make sure that we're paying attention to what's going on and stuff. And so you know, I think being able to unravel who actually the library is in charge of, you know, renting to and otherwise and and making sure that the city knows and the city knows otherwise if it's not because obviously, there's not been good communication with that.
Yeah. And since that incident, Steve and I have exchanged emails several times, trying to kind of work out where are the pain points, where miscommunication is happening, trying to avoid this happening in the future. And then, you know, how that might, if we want to make any changes to how we manage reservations in the new IGA. I mean, all that's something we've talked about recently and are are open to. So.
Awesome. That is awesome. Thank you for for that.
Yeah.
I talked it to death.
Hey, one other question. Counsel went through. Did you have anything? No.
I don't have a question necessarily. It's more of a statement. So where do we go from here? Is what I'd like to know, like, I think I'm I'm having trouble wrapping around what next steps look like. And how do we move this path forward?
Well, I think in your packets tonight, so Ashley shared with me the actual quick claim deed and easement for the library. It's in your packet at the very end. It's also with this has been reviewed by the Benton County Attorney. I think this is how Ashley. There was a request to inquire about it on her side.
Right.
And so she forwarded to me, I forwarded to the mayor and it's in your packet at the very end. I think you should read that. Our attorney is now reviewing it as she's back in her office. She's reviewing it today. And I think your next step is probably to review with the attorney the information. And so you understand what your obligations are for the library. The IGA, when you read the IGA, it is clearly patterned after the conditions in the easement. And I have other questions, but I I don't understand enough yet. We found all this information in our files in various places. It took us about two hours, but we found it. But what we don't have are things such as acceptance of this by the city of Monroe. So I there's still more questions. And I think at this point for counsel is to have a session with our attorney just to make sure you understand all this. And then at that point, I think hammering out some of these things with the IGA and how you wish to go forward will become much clearer.
Okay.
And I I think regardless, some things such as the RFP for janitorial, getting some firm costs and understanding that is probably a good next step.
Okay.
That could be done. I did, Ashley did ask me about the rooms and what could be done. And I did reply. And so Ashley has an and also her branch extension manager was CC'd in that as well. So both of them, I'm sure are talking about how we can work that out. And so those are kind of the big things. A certificate of insurance is an easy one. Those are handled all the time by insurance carrier. So so that shouldn't be a problem for us. But I think understanding our obligations, you counsel, understanding the city's obligations is probably the overall overarching. And then from there, I think we can work something out.
Okay. I just have another comment and a question for you. Do you feel like you're getting the information that you need to be able to feel comfortable with where we're at and down the right path for moving forward? And if not, do you have any input for us?
I think, well, thank you for asking, first of all. And I just want to say I get the sense from everyone and you've stated it. And I just want to thank you for your commitment to having a library in the city of Monroe. That's your dedication towards that is is really strong. And I sense that and you've said it. And I I really, really appreciate that. I feel confident we can come to some agreement. I do think understanding the easements, the easement and the obligations it places on Monroe are really important. That's not to say we can't work together to understand what your problems are and and what what it is you need help with and what those numbers are. And then have conversation about that. I will say from my perspective at this point, especially with the easement in front of us, it would be helpful for me to really understand even just something as simple as a bullet list of like, these are the important things we really need to see in an IGA. So that way then we can start to work through those. And I think that feels a little murky with the 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 revelation of the easement. So I I think that would really help us kind of figure out what your priorities are and then how I can help meet them.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
Okay, one last chance.
Thanks for being here tonight.
Yeah, I'll be happy to be at any of your, any of your meetings, just.
Thank you, Ashley.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley.
As far as we're doing that stuff with our counsel. Legal counsel.
Yes, yes, I know. With an IL versus the EL.
Well, we would have to do what? Is that an executive session issue? And we would just add that on to one of our.
Either add it on or just real. You can add up to counsel and just and I think it's.
And you can get back to us as far as like after she's reviewed it, what our availability and stuff like that for.
I ask her. I I had been prefacing email. I told her that counsel needs to our counsel with an IL needs to hear from counsel EL. And and so after you're done reviewing it, just give me a summary and then let's schedule some time.
Okay.
So she's aware that we're
Yeah.
Rebating to talk.
Sounds good.
It's like we haven't been following any of this. You look at the memorandum of understanding, there's supposed to be the committee consisting of South Benton Communities Enhancement. And Library Director twice a year, every year, not happening.
If you read the easement, oh, I I don't understand. Because I have nothing. Ordinance, there's no resolution.
I need extra.
Well, the easement is not between easements between that.
I mean, there's a red organization in Benton County, not us. Leaves me groggy for some time.
This is probably a really good question for you.
Am I what? I'm comfortable.
That's my thought, too.
This easement was not presented to us, at least not made presented to us in full. How should I say it?
Full honesty.
Because it says right here, property will be retained forever for library purposes. And that's not what we were told. And that's not what we read.
And and I so both then mayor billings.
Yeah.
And then president billings, Mayor Cantor. Rick Honbaum, the city administrator, all said, we own the building. There was never any, any discussion of the library not being the property of the city of Monroe. And there was no mention of any easements or any codicils, codicils.
Because we had to pay for a lot of different things going on up there because we did, we were told we did own it and we had to pay for that.
Right. So and there was and there's no record, there's no ordinance and there's no res. I have all the ordinances and resolutions going back to, I'm pretty good back to 2008.
I I'm thinking it. It was actually Mayor Thayer. That there was two mayors during this.
Okay, that's okay.
Yeah. And Council President Carol McGlasson.
Okay, thank you.
She's the one that signed the MOU, but I don't see any of our signatures anywhere here.
That's a good
Or Rich Honbaum here on this one.
Yeah, this one's for the library legacy fund. It's, yeah, that was something started later on.
That was something.
Question is for counsel is how did this get accepted?
I'll have to go dig and see if I save any.
We went there at the time.
Counselor Myers is 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 our our legacy.
And I will tell you that when I saw the signature on what I read and it wasn't this. I was kind of upset, you know, I was dealing with multimillion dollar contracts at times. And so was Council President, and I was surprised that she signed it. I think she felt pressured. But this easement is the first time I've seen it in my recollection.
If it's done, it's done. I mean.
It is done.
I mean.
Yeah, but here's the thing, this easement, do you see anybody from the City of Monroe signing it?
Yeah, there's nothing on there.
Nope. So how's the easement binding on us? I have no idea.
And it, there, there is a, there is a we can, you, you can give it back to Benton County.
I mean, I don't want to lose the library. I don't want to do that. I'm just saying. This needs to be cleaned up.
I, I don't think we would. I mean, if we decided to just give back, I don't, we wouldn't lose it. They would just then take care of that.
I know that, but I, I, you know, I like it. I like us to have it. I mean, it's a nice building to say it's ours. But the easement in here says it's not ours.
That's correct.
Right.
And that's absolutely correct.
What? This is the first time I've seen this, this, and I need to, I need.
Any of us.
Read this and.
To be very clear with you, I just got it last Wednesday. I forwarded on immediately to Mayor, Mayor Sheets. And I put it in your packet this evening for you to all read. This is not a discussion of, and it has to go to our council. EL is reviewing it and that person should be the one sitting down with all of you after you get a chance to read it and ask good questions of council in executive session so that you understand exactly what this means.
Steve, did I hear correctly that you said that the city officially has not actually accepted this in the 13 years?
I have.
Well, he couldn't find a document of it.
We cannot find any document and according to Ashley, talking to Benton County Council, they can't either.
Oh, that's what I was just gonna ask is.
It does say, yeah, it does say here in the subs, subsequent, I can't even speak, subsequent, subsequent transfers. Anyway, here I go. Grantor agrees to incorporate terms of this easement in any deed or other legal instrument by which they transfer or divest themselves of any interest in all or portion of the property. That means Benton County giving it to us. And it was never presented that way. It was the South Benton Community Enhancement Association giving it to us.
We had legal looking at reviewing this, right?
Yeah, right as we speak. Yeah, Lori Cooper is our attorney and she responded, she came back off vacation and she responded, I'm looking at it and I'll get back to you.
Well, I'm talking about now. There's nothing we can do about that, right? So we just need to think about what we need to do to get it current so we can move forward. That's where, that's where my mind is at.
Yeah, but you know, here, we don't actually own it unless we can find the property where it transferred from Benton County to us.
Well, I mean, if we've been operating for the last, how many years?
Doesn't matter.
There might be a precedent. I I don't know. I'm not legal, but I'm just saying that we we need to see what our options are.
The problem right now, and this is what I presented to the mayor, anything we talk about right now is speculation.
Right.
And we go down a rabbit hole of.
I agree.
Yeah, wait for the city attorney.
But yeah, we do, we do need to clean that up.
Yeah, we do.
I want to see the document where we have papers signed transferring it to us. So you know, it could cause problems down the road. Someone could say, move into town and say, why are we paying for county property? Because we don't have a town.
And that's kind of what sparked this whole discussion is why are we paying for a county resource?
Yeah.
So, and that's why it matters. I mean, in our minds, we want to go on, we want to clean it up and keep going. But in our minds, we've got to clean this up. Well, the liabilities out there.
Not only that, as a city, we've spent money there.
Lots of money.
Lots of money there. Because we were told that it was our responsibility because we owned it. So if that is not in fact true, it's, there's some ramifications to that as well.
It, there was some information, I think, that was left off the conversation.
And if you're not also notice, there's supposed to be a twice or two meetings a year with the City of Monroe, the Benton County, South Benton County Enhancement people and the library. Not happening.
Well, does the South Benton County Enhancement Group still exist? But I was wondering, it sounds like it's, I've never heard of it until today. So it seems like it probably dissolved.
No, they were all here, a lot of them.
Yeah. Was that?
Roger was here.
Roger Irving, he's a.
Still a thing though, or is he?
Yeah, the organization is.
Uh, yeah, I don't know if they are either, but I I'm just saying, we don't have any documents that say it's.
Right. Well, council's looking at it. We'll see what.
We have.
Let's wait till we get your back and then she will directly talk with you in an executive session. So but I gave this information to you so you can read it through.
Thank you.
Get your questions.
Yes, I need to do that.
Yeah. And 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 so the council can can help you figure out what the best next steps are.
When you say council, are you talking about Benton County Council or are you talking about city? Oh, oh my gosh, too many councils.
This is our city attorney, Lori Cooper.
Understood. Okay.
And she, she's the one that talked to you a while back on the Threl case.
Yes, I remember.
Yeah. But I mean, everything in here says the grantor and the, you know, the county. Well, the ground is not us, the county's not us.
Right.
They're the only parties in this.
I I don't know. This is, this is definitely a job for the council.
Yes.
Too many good because it doesn't tie us in.
No, it doesn't.
All right, are we ready, are we ready to move on?
Yeah.
Shall we move on?
We shall.
Yes.
So the next item on the agenda is City Hall. Another fun topic.
Another dead horse.
I put that there because since the easement says one thing, I'm not exactly sure. Of course, on the other hand, the easement also says that Benton County and the City of Crevelles will make up all the rules that we have to abide by. So
Yeah.
I don't know. The City Hall, I guess, is there because we need to put a new city hall in someplace. Now I'm going to add just a little wrinkle to this.
It has so many wrinkles.
I know.
Yeah, sorry. Can't take it back. So one of the questions that has periodically come up is that of Monroe because of law enforcement. You know, I think Benton County does a great job when they're able to be here. Okay.
Yes.
But if they're not able to be here, and and an example is Fourth of July. Okay, so over by the mayor's house across the way, there was a very nice pyrotechnic display of things that are illegal.
Next to the field?
Yes.
Yes, we like excitement.
So how do you deal with that? Well, if you, you, if you look at the state fire marshal's site, they will cite you the applicable codes and tell you what's legal and not legal and all the things that the mayor experienced were not legal, legal fireworks at all. However, the recourse is you have to, what they tell you to do is call the non-emergency number. Unless there's some injury to a person or a fire or something. Yeah, it's, it's non-emergency number. The second part of that is only law enforcement can deal with it, any fireworks. So if you have illegal fireworks or fireworks you think is getting out of control, according to the OARs and the state fire marshal, only a member of law enforcement can actually intervene and do something about it.
So state or county?
State, county or local, which is where I'm going. So there is, the Department of Justice has this wonderful, wonderful pamphlet on cities, small municipalities, setting up their own police departments. And then, of course, they say they're very expensive. But a lot of the cost is getting that initially set up. Which, of course, they have grants for to not just outfit and all that, but also the building and everything else. They also warn you that in a nice colored box below that most municipalities that take advantage of this have difficulties a few years down the road because haven't budgeted for the ongoing costs of that, which has to be either some kind of fee structure or a bond or something else, you know, an operations bond of that nature. But I'm thinking more along, a little bit more down the road or anything, but those things, you know, to initiate them, you have to apply for these grants and, you know, and go through the motions. It's not something that's instantaneous. But certainly, if you, and then you're going to have to go to the voters, you know, and ask for for that. So the question for council is, for you to discuss anyway, is and provide feedback, is that something you would like to entertain?
I think we should. I think we should have a town hall about it because the sheriff's been really good about keeping all the information. So we have the stats of how much they're down here dealing with things. And then, you know, of course, how much time we've actually contracted them for and the fact that the time we've contracted them for that we really like them to be doing like traffic enforcement or whatever, they're actually doing all the other curricular stuff that's going on that
It's amazing, isn't it?
Generally privy to. Um, but I think if people can see, because a lot of people do complain about it and would like to have more enforcement.
I would like, I agree with you. I think it would be great if we can have more information on it and so that we can absorb what what's being proposed and then then have a town hall and be able to be more cognizant and answer the questions at a higher level.
And Saturday you do have a town hall.
Yes, we do.
A law enforcement town hall. So I, that's a good start. What I will do then, I just needed some direction. In my spare time, I will, I have the DOJ information and some of that's very, very good. It's it's easy reading and it does, it's for councils
Okay.
to make decisions. And it goes through a very nice process of making the decision, which also includes, by the way, lots of outreach and town halls with the citizens.
So when you said they also includes a building, would that be, could be a combined city hall?
Could be. I mean, what it will do is. Thank you, counselor. You connected the dots.
Amount of time that you need to run that police force to to keep the building, keep the money from the grants.
I'm sorry, counselor?
Sorry, I'm, my mouth is still full of Novocain.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
The minimum amount of time we would have to keep a police force here to satisfy the grants, right?
Right.
That's a very good question. I don't know.
It's a good question.
What I, what I, it just, just reading it, they say is, you know, often after two or three years, cities often find difficulties and cannot have their police force anymore. So I don't know if you have to pay the grant back or not. A community block development grant is five years.
Be really nice to know if they had a why on that or if that's just a statement they made or if they have more information.
What I can do is I could print that out or make it available. You know, it's a, it's a PDF.
Right.
So and and I can, you know, we can take parts and pieces, just just so you can start absorbing what it says. I mean, it is a step by step process to.
We don't, we'd get a grant, we'd try for a grant and then we'd also have to put out for a bond from.
Yes, you would have to for operations.
And how long would we want that bond to go?
Typically, typically it's five or 10 years.
Five or 10.
Yeah.
And then it, but doesn't it, don't you get revenue due to having, I mean, doesn't, isn't it supposed to kind of self sustain after a while or?
Yeah, well, it self sustains through your, you know, there are lots of resources for law enforcement, number one. The second part of that, though, is that, yes, the city does have to pay for the salaries and and that type of thing. And that has to be budgeted.
Right.
So the city then at that point would have to find the money to do so. Now, one of the things, and and so the way you're going to do that is either through fees or you're going to go out and and ask
A special taxing district.
Tax, taxing district for and to get a bond. An option letting.
Ooh. So we don't have to stay in city limits for that, do we? Be almost like the fire district?
It depends. Yes, it actually did. That actually depends on what you want.
That might be more affordable, I mean.
District is.
A service because South Benton is a big area. And Benton County is always saying my resources are limited.
Bell Fountain and I'll find get included in that. I we might be able to.
There you go. So there's some, there's some good ideas. Let me get that information to you. You can start reading it and see how that might work.
What do they recommend? Minimum officers?
Typically, they say one, but frankly, you want two.
Yeah.
And if you have one, some folks get a police chief and then a, an officer to go go with. The police chief is typically needed for two or more officers with that. That's their recommendation.
Like the town of Eureka.
Basically, yes.
The town of what?
Eureka.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does the Deer Village have their own police?
Good question.
Of course. Like, I'm trying to think of like comps in the area, if we have any, or or like I'll see, do they call somebody in from?
Yeah, I'll see is Benton County. Flemeth has its own police department. Sweet Home has its own police department.
Harrisburg have Coburn do theirs.
Yeah, has Coburn do theirs or yeah, has Coburn do theirs. Junction City has theirs.
Well, we don't want to work with Junction City. We learned from that.
Yeah, the chief has changed, but also can, well, with that too, can you have? I want to say a reserve. I don't know if I'm saying the right thing, like reserve officers or even try to set up community policing to and on on some level.
Yes, and actually there are community policing grants to set that up and work with it. Reserves are great. Matter of fact, when I was in the Coast Guard in the reserves, our XO was the reserve, was the police chief of Oak Ridge. And I took my warrants exam in the cell, the old cell, closed the door on me. And so I can actually say it was in a prison cell. But he figured that was a great way to keep the, you know, because you have to mentor the person. So, you know, make sure they're taking the test and I wasn't, I wasn't going anywhere.
I would presume if we had, say, two officers, we could probably contract a third one from Benton County for like a week or so if someone was out.
I would, I I think there's lots of options. As I, as I know and have worked with the police forces, most of them have several officers, but I also know that they do borrow officers and they don't have a reserve force as well.
So we have to have a reciprocal agreement.
Yeah.
And then I presume everything's going to be nine one one out of center up in Corvallis.
They'll be out of the nine one one center. So.
It's worth looking at because I know that there's been a lot of community wanting something like that. I'm I would love to see it happen. I just, I I've seen our budget, but.
It's probably cheaper than paying $50 a month for my alarm system. If you think about that.
Hey, when, when your vehicle gets stolen route out of your driveway, you're on board. It's pretty sad.
As far as City Hall, I am now asking to get some quotes for the modular units that we've talked about and that type of thing. So that's really the update.
So do we have any kind of idea what the would be for putting the lot or?
Probably, probably need to get words on that.
I have Mark looking, getting some of our local contractors to take a look at it.
And then we got to find a place for, there's, there's minimal stuff in the, in that building though, right?
Minimal.
The reader building.
And and most of it is either throwaway or.
Super, I mean, it's basically a tear down. So.
The few things, the one thing are the old Christmas lights, which I understand were paid with donations. So if we sell them, it goes back into the maintain the Christmas light fund.
Well, one thing you might do is.
Oh, you mean the old trees?
Trees, right. The old trees that were on the.
The one thing you might want to check into is my, you know, full disclosure, my wife's the president of the museum, but they may want to look at some of that stuff and take.
I would love, there's, there's some logging equipment in there.
Okay.
That is really cool and it needs to be taken care of.
Do you have a Mallory block? I used to work for Mallory.
I don't know. But we do have an old, one of those steam driven or gasoline with the reciprocating. It's very cool for for sawing logs. Yeah, it's, it's very, it is something that should be taken care of.
And there's like, I think there's USDA financing for stuff like that.
Yes, there is.
On, on.
For everything we're talking about, that there is, there is financing. And I'm also going down that thing of how can we finance it rather than lease or rent? How can we just finance it?
Right.
Are we, are we moving down that? It seems like every time we we meet, we we have a new option for the City Hall. Are we going down the path now of really like the modular unit? Because last time we weren't.
Well, I
I'm having a hard time keeping up.
Well, the modular unit was what we had talked about. We have talked about it.
We have talked about it, but then I think the last time you said it was cost prohibitive and so it really wasn't.
No, it's not cost prohibitive. It's just that it's $80,000, you know, for one. And there's about another $40,000 on top of that, 45 for. So we have $125,000 that we're going to have to find the money for. We have some of that in reserves. So, you know, and so then the idea would be, do we finance it? Do we do a rental? Do we do a rent to own? Those, that's, that's where the options were. That's where the options were.
Now, is there any kind of grant? I know it's not really FEMA, but because it's earthquake issue, is there any kind of?
The seismic grants, there are seismic grants, but they, they're limited to first responders and schools.
But the sheriff's department. But the sheriff's department little offices in there.
That's right.
I asked about that and it does, yeah, I I I I if I may have mentioned, I did all the Lincoln County fire departments for all Lincoln County did the seismic grants. And so I know the folks that are up there. And so I called and said, we do have a little substation down here. They said, well, yes, but our list of funding for schools and other things are so great.
What what happens with the substation if we vacate? Because I mean, that's part of the 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 city hall building, right?
Yes, I I certainly think that if you get one of the larger modulars that would fit on that pad, you could have a city hall. A meeting area that could also double as court and then a substation.
And it would be our police station if we get police.
And we had that we have a police station or we rebuild, then we could rebuild the other side and turn into our police station.
True.
So there's options. But at this point, getting a modular unit is just really.
I think that's the quickest.
Quickest solution. The options, counselor, are the payment off. How do we pay for?
Which reminds me, we don't really have any earthquake, it's, you know, escape plans in here, do we?
No, that door.
I know, but there's no, there's.
Jump through a window or something.
Oh, yeah.
No, no jumping out of windows.
So sucker does crack.
It does.
So you're gonna start looking at quotes for a building of sufficient size and obviously we probably still wanted to have some sort of bathroom facilities.
Yes, we need to have public restrooms and.
Forty by eighty.
That was what what the what I'm specing.
All right, let's move on to abandoned homes and property maintenance.
That's just an old, we we talked about some of the abandoned homes in town. I have some more information that I am looking at. There are some very specific recommendations in Oregon statute and LLC has guidance on that and I'm so compiling that for you.
So we'll probably see some info on that at the council.
Council, right. And then some direction that you can you can take.
Yeah, because I think I saw him over there at the one over on Eighth.
Right down there, taking trees down and.
Fourth weekend. I don't know, I just saw they had a truck and trailer and they were over there because we had put some stuff out for free and they stopped by our house to grab stuff. Because we were cleaning out the garage.
Could, did anybody harvest, like, collect the willow for use?
Well, people are trying to establish adverse procession to take it and that's what they're trying to do because there is no owner.
Yeah.
To that.
Yeah, they have to do some kind of improvement to.
They're squatters, right? They're basically, I mean, they might not be living there, but their plan is to.
They're trying is to try to show that they're paying the taxes, they're trying to improve the property, et cetera.
But don't they need a year?
Yes, they do. And so that's why we need to act on it.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, I look forward to seeing that at the next city council. Okay. Uh, next up, new discussion, planning commission recommendations for short term rentals.
Okay, so at the planning commission, there we had, I showed them the code, the ASDR accessory. A short term rental code that we adopted adapted from Portland. There were the recommendations of of the planet commission to you was one to reduce the important, the current is two hundred, you have to be a resident in your dwelling for two hundred and seventy days. They made a recommendation, one hundred and eighty days. We we had in Portland, Airbnbs, there was a discussion from one of the commissioners that this didn't address Airbnbs, but in Airbnbs can rent out two bedrooms, three, four, five, they can or a whole house. Okay? Now, if you have a whole house that has more than two bedrooms in Portland, you have to go through a conditional use process. As opposed to two or one or two bedrooms, which is of what's what we call a type one planning review, which is basically some checklist. You have to have a an inspection and I talked with the new building inspector, director of building inspections at Benton County this last week. And she comes from Texas where they have what they call life and safety welfare inspections, which go into homes and make sure that rooms are up to code, fire extinguishers, the, you know, do all the things that you we would require someone to do. And so they're going to help set, they they said that should be in place regardless. So she's going to find some code and actually make that. So we would require people to get a permit, yeah, an inspection for Benton County. And after that, it's just basically following the checklist. You folks at the council recommended having no more than a cap on ten units. So they recommended actually five less, but you know, it's a number they but they 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 understand.
They were in agreement about a cap of some sort, just so that we're not having the whole town turn into.
To turn into to Airbnbs or whatever. And because that does affect your property, you know, rates do go up. The the studies show that they may not be terribly significant, but it also takes a lot away homes and other property.
People that want to live here.
Right. And workforce living or anything else. It makes it hard to do that. So a cap, I think that was recommended. The Airbnb part of it, so part of the discussion was if someone has a home and instead of selling it, they turn into an Airbnb. Okay, so.
That's a short term rental.
That is a short term rental. In the code that we have, if it's over two bedrooms, then it has to go through a conditional use process. The planning commission, I could tell was, I think, uncomfortable dealing with that because they're making decisions on behalf of the city. The city council in particular, because you're the ones that are elected by the folks in here. So it's it because what the planning commission will be looking at would be, does this fit in the neighborhood, be making a lot of local decisions on it. They also felt that that's a lot of work for a city planning commission to have to do a land use review because this is not a a short term thing. So that was also one of their recommendations is, and of course, if you have an Airbnb for an entire house, you're taking that entire house into short term and not available for for that. So we do have a, I put the twenty day notice out for this to be a hearing on our next council meeting. But those are some of the things that I thought I would bring up to you so you can provide some direction to stick, because I make a staff recommendation to you. It is a recommendation, you read it and you can decide any changes or anything to that you wish after the hearing to approve it or even not approve it. But I thought I would ask you about your thoughts on turning whole homes into Airbnbs. Right now, it's a very simple, two bedroom, one or two bedrooms. You must live in it two hundred and seventy days a year. Airbnbs can still, they can still be an Airbnb. There's nothing but we don't really deal with the whole house with this. It's a much simpler ordinance. Do you want to expand it to include a land use hearing? The commission did recommend one to three bedrooms, not one to two. So what are your, I'm gathering your thoughts so that I can craft the recommendation.
I'm not sure I fully understand.
So.
I'm sorry. Today that I need a lot of it, so.
So the permitting thing that we've reviewed before was regarding specifically people renting out parts of their home or an ADU or
Correct.
Something. Not like a whole house.
That's correct.
So it would be that short term rental policy if we enacted or or made it an ordinance or whatever, would only deal with those types of short term rentals.
One or two bedrooms, an ADU.
So would we want to include?
Bigger whole houses, more bedrooms. Do you want that to be, right now, if I did, I could, the code that I have is what Portland calls a type B. But that's a land use.
Honestly, with like the small amount of I I don't know about you guys. I mean, we have a very small amount of home inventory in the area and I don't know that
Expanding.
Turning it into, yeah, where people are just doing short term rentals for whole houses.
Yeah.
Would really be in the best interest of. I mean, I think it's one thing if you're, somebody wants to make some extra income off of a room they're not using is a whole separate thing from somebody that wants to come and buy properties so that they can you know, have a bunch of vacationers here, you know, renting a few days or a week at a time or whatever.
And it doesn't mean you can't add it, that the council cannot add.
Right.
Later on or expand the cap or whatever you wish to do.
What was that?
Yeah. Yeah, we were still, yeah, we had talked about having a cap because we didn't. Yeah.
Right.
Basically, we would only issue a certain number of permits per year and.
Correct.
Yeah.
I think the idea is that it was more likely, frankly, that you would, if if you wanted to encourage this kind of accommodations for people in the area, that it's actually frankly probably more likely that somebody would do their house as opposed to this arrangement of the ADU or them living. So because that there would be an appetite for that as a more likely use case, there should be some acknowledgement to how it should be handled. And that, I mean, it's just like Steve says, it's going to be a type B land use hearing, then just make sure that that's clearly articulated so people understand. It will still fall inside of that same permitting guideline.
Would would those also be into that same, that cap is for all types, right?
Yes.
What was the, since you're here, Torin, and you're on planning commission, what was the the thought behind reducing two seventy days per year to one eighty?
I I think it was along the line of Airbnb, that the there was some, I think, because the word Airbnb, which of course is a trademark name, was not in the actual ordinance and Portland doesn't either. I mean, from their viewpoint, an Airbnb, a VBO, any of those things, Turbo, Turbo are all short term rentals. And it doesn't matter that what they're doing is actually going down and saying it's the number of rooms. So if it's one or two, you want to, you necessarily dwelling unit. You want to let people utilize their their space and make a little extra income on it, helps the community, that's great. If you want to do more than that, however, we want to regulate it a little more strongly. So they have what's called a type B, which goes through the land use process.
Or more than two.
Yeah, more than two.
And that would be the likely use of it. I mean, I would, I would see, I, to your point, that would probably be more likely than just renting out a room or two.
Right. So if someone wants to do a whole house. So the the concern was is that if you have to live in your house two hundred and seventy days a year resident and that leaves X many days after that, how many days do you really have, are you going to be able to rent it out? So that's one question. The second, so that's the reason why there was a reduction to one hundred and eighty days.
Yeah. Got it. Okay, thank you.
And and the second part of it is 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 whether or not whether or not bumping it up to three bedrooms might allow some homes to be used more affection, efficiently than say just two. So the two is really kind of your, hey, I've got some extra stuff here. I got an ADU I have here. Maybe I'm going to live in the ADU and rent out two rooms in my house. We had do have a lot of two bedroom homes in this town.
Yeah.
So it it's a small scale versus the larger scale of the whole home or three or four bedrooms or five bedrooms. And it does not mean that Monroe has to follow that. It can say one to three bedrooms.
Well, if they have a three bedroom and they're actually staying in the house and renting out two bedrooms, is that still under that two bedroom?
Yes, it not, yeah, it's it's how many, you have to state how many rooms of your home you are renting out. So it could be a five bedroom home. I have two spare bedrooms and I'm going to rent them out.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Right.
And it's only for short term uses. So if they're renting you know, long term, yeah, six months, it's actually thirty days or less is considered short term. And so anything thirty days, yeah, anything more than that would be just considered regular.
How much do you have to check out? I can also.
Like how many inches you have to move your car before you get the storage violation, right?
I also can see people that have camp trailers. I have one, I would never do this, but I could see people calling that an ADU renting it out.
Well, I think in our our policy, it does state.
Yeah, RVs are not.
Yeah, our, yeah, RVs are not.
Two weeks for relatives to stay there.
Right.
But I'm just saying, I could see somebody trying.
Well, and and I think in our policies, I think the ADU is pretty good, other than the ADU will have to be changed if we allow short term because right now it says only family members can do that.
Right.
So the recommendation that you'll get will actually touch on several parts and pieces. Some will, what we're really doing is adding in section six of our use code, we're adding this new short term rental section. And then we're adding snippets in the zones to refer to section six. And then the ADU will have to be changed to also refer to section six. And then the other part of it is commercial use. So if you're in a commercial or RDO in a multi thing, it's allowed.
It's allowed?
It's allowed.
Where does commercial, it goes up to fifth or not fifth?
Sixth street right now.
Okay, thank you.
So basically, so basically, it's it's one block off of the of the highway. And then extending all the way up to city limits on on both sides.
Okay.
So in essence, if, for instance, if the Niestrums are intend on having some short term residence residential things above and you know, they can use short term. And I've talked to their their architect about that. Also, if Misty Croson wants to utilize that, this would allow her to do it as well. And it would be a permit, not a a land use for them.
And and they would go to the planning commission for the permit.
Oh, no, they would come to me for the. It would be a type one decision. They don't have to go to the planning commission.
Yeah.
Because it would be prescribed. It would not be something, they would still have to get code inspections and follow the basic rules and to make sure it's safe and all that. And they would have to register with the city and they would have to pay a fee to the city. And then they'd have to pay transit transient tax to the state.
Right.
They would have to sign up with the state to do that. We would, we would need an IGA with the state. But that State Department of Revenue, DOR, will will collect the tax on our behalf.
Is that like point seven eight or something like that?
Yes, it is. And actually, they would pay, we we would have to make a decision as to how we want to integrate Benton County and all that as well, but I.
We we would be responsible for collecting it and then turning it over or?
Give it to the state, enforces it and gives us our cut.
Okay.
Yeah, so that way, that way they manage any of them.
Yeah, we don't have to.
Real quick, just related to this, what is happening with Mr. Tyrell? If if now is not an appropriate time.
That's fine. He was sent his paperwork.
Okay.
Saying that he owes the city thirty days to pay and after that.
Oh, thirty days.
Yeah, and then it if I no pay, then we get a we notarize a form that our attorney will provide us and we will put a lien on the property.
Got it.
For the entire amount.
What's the deadline?
Uh, let's see, it would be July.
It's this month.
It's this month, yeah, it's exactly when it'll be July eighteenth.
Okay. Coming up.
That's next week.
And has it been accruing since then or did it cap at two twenty?
They capped it. And he has thirty days to pay it. And at that point, it is a, it goes to I have to find out if it goes to collections. I know it can go to a lien. That's, I have a series of questions for our attorney, but the library is kind of the first one.
Yeah.
In the queue.
Thank you.
Going back to the short term rentals, one to three bedrooms, want to do the whole house. I'm okay as long as there's a cap.
Yeah. Yeah.
Personally.
Yeah, that's, yes, I'm, I'm the same.
Yeah.
The cap is important.
Yeah, but beyond that, it doesn't matter.
I'm waffling between two and three is the max, but.
Just do three then.
I mean, if everybody is okay with three, I'm okay with three.
I'm okay with three. To, um, the cap of ten seems a, or sorry, cap of five seems a little low for the size of our city, my personal opinion.
What, what I would do is say that this needs, that the cap needs to be reviewed annually by council.
Okay.
But you can just, but whatever cap you wish.
Just put ten and then they can review it.
What do we got? Three, three hundred accounts in town? What are?
Three hundred and thirty accounts. However, ten of those are non-service. Um, twenty of those, twenty-two of those are, um, commercial.
Okay.
So about two hundred and ninety-eight, um, connections.
So ten would be, you know.
One percent or no?
Three percent. No.
No.
One third of its percent.
A very small amount.
So ten, ten wouldn't be, like you say, ten wouldn't be that, that bad, but.
And it was certainly, and certainly if people can petition the council, you can, you can change it. It would be my resolution. So you can certainly change it. You see the demand and you feel this is reasonable. Um, the council can change it.
Well, if we got empty homes. And people aren't buying them, they're buying the new ones.
Yeah, well, this is an opportunity.
There are a lot of new homes that have been for sale over in Red Hills for months.
Really?
Months and months.
Yeah, it's, uh.
Yeah, that's true.
And the flooding.
I couldn't afford to buy them. Yeah.
Nobody can afford to move right now. If they want to.
Too high. And if you had an arm, uh, when you bought the house, when it was really low, thinking this interest rate would stay low forever.
Hmm, you gotta get out.
You gotta get out.
Oh, yeah.
So it sounds like three bedrooms.
Two hundred and seventy days residency or a hundred and eighty days?
One eighty, one eighty.
The justification made sense.
Okay, so one eighty.
And then.
Up to three, after that, A would be, we'll just, do you want me to include a, a larger home, more than three bedrooms? Do you want to include a, a, uh, conditional use permit option? Or do you want to just keep it the way it is right now and see how it works?
Include a large home, I definitely would want that to go down to five rather than ten.
Yeah, well, I'm, like you say, like total ten, but no more than five of the type tubes or conditionals.
Okay.
Something like that.
Also split it.
Yes, well, you can have ten total.
Three bedrooms.
Up to three bedrooms.
With five.
No, I'm saying ten total. Up to three bedrooms.
Okay.
For the conditional use ones.
Okay, gotcha.
You can have five, as long as those five are still available in that ten.
Okay.
What I'm saying is if there's seven of the other ones, you can only have three of it. Okay.
Okay.
That's, I, I mean, that's. And then we can always change it, right?
Yeah, then you can change it.
Change, right?
Yeah, it'll be, I will make that number in the recommendation to be changed by review of council, uh, at a minimum manually.
And that, and this would be specific to residential areas?
So it's specific to residential areas or multi or in commercial zones where it's mixed use. This is where the Mystic Croson and what the Niestrums have proposed. It would be allowed in those conditions when you had commercial below and, uh, a residential above.
Um, also similar to Ms. Walt's property, right? That would probably fall within that.
Right.
If that ever.
Yeah.
Okay, there you go.
Oh, uh, Councilor.
I, so is there any? So what happens if we do this and then we decide it's not a good thing? Do we have any?
You can, you can amend it or repeal it.
Okay. I just want to make sure that there's a mechanism for that should we find. It's so hard because there's so many great ideas and you want to do things and it's exciting and we. Done things and jumped in before and then went, whoa, wait a minute and then.
Any ordinance, any ordinance that you pass, you can amend or repeal. And we have amended several of them, including taking whole sections out. Um, so that's, that is up to. Ordinances, um, like we have found, many of our ordinances were written a long time ago and some of it doesn't make sense anymore.
Right, yeah.
You know, when you have parts of your ordinances say you can't stand or shout, you know, which is the, the vendors, you know, yelling out in the street, you know? Um, with that verbiage is our cake, you know, so why don't you review it and change it to update it as we've been attempting to do?
I'm still surprised by the fact that pigs aren't allowed within city limits. I think that's a really funny one because as somebody who has had two pot-bellied pig cats.
Yeah.
And I don't think that when that, that ordinance was written, pot-bellied pigs were.
No, they were thinking about.
They're thinking about, you know.
Somebody having a sty in their backyard.
Right.
Do goats or anything.
Oh. Or keep bees.
I'll tell you, those things.
You can.
They're true.
Yeah.
And then. The other piece of it was, um, zoning as part of, I know we had talked about, is there? Anything that has to be changed in the zoning for the ordinance?
So what will happen is, is that as I explained, the.
I know that's a whole different process to.
Well.
Amend the.
Well, all of this is part of the land use process. This is why I had to put a twenty-day notice out for hearing. So you will have a quasi judicial legislative hearing, a type three hearing on this. That's the only way we can change it. So the zonings will, for, for this going to affect, applies to both GRA and GRB, that is our low density and medium density.
Right.
It applies to the commercial zone within the Riverside District overlay, which is most of what I just explained. We included all that. It does not include multifamily homes. So Portland does allow that. I don't think that's, I did not, and the planning commission did not, uh, agree that. Allowing someone who has apartments, which is are primarily are only really affordable housing.
Right.
Right.
To take it away into short-term rentals.
Yeah.
So it does not include that.
That makes sense.
So. That's the, so what we'll have is each zone will say. It, short-term rentals are allowed per section six and it'll be six dot one oh five. That was actually. In our current code, that was reserved for future use. So. Future use has arrived. So that six dot one oh five will be the reference for this and our code and our zoning will reference that. Um, throughout the documents so that, um, uh, they'll know what has to happen.
And, um, we had discussed too about possibly expanding rules for ADUs.
And then the ADU section will have to be changed as well. To, to allow short-term rentals, um, and remove the qualification for family members. It's really striking a sense.
And of course, they wouldn't have to live in it for a hundred.
And even long-term, if the, if the one of them is occupied by the owners.
Right, so, so.
Before.
And, and, and that is in the code, allowing the ADUs to be used for that. So what it says is in essence that a. You can live in your ADU and rent out the house. So the sections in our current ADU that. Don't allow that will be removed.
Got it.
But they will still have to be code certified for being livable homes.
So if it's a four-bedroom house and they live in the ADU, they'd still have to go conditional use then?
And for if they, if they choose to rent out all four homes, they could choose to rent out three.
So they can.
And they can use the other one for, get, for them, family, family office or.
Yeah.
Storage.
Interesting. What's that?
It gets inspected.
Or they could do a long-term rental of it.
Yeah, their choice. So you're, you're, what you're doing is giving citizens an opportunity to utilize their property more efficiently than what they currently are.
And it's, it's denser housing instead of growing out. I mean, it, it does.
Well, and it fits with the economic development policy. We, I would say we promote agritourism and things to do here. It gives people opportunity to come and. And that's what Misty Croson, uh, has said repeatedly is that she can, she can fill those rooms.
Right. And, and I have a friend who has a couple of different dwellings on her property, um. Toren knows who I'm referring to probably, um, and sometimes those dwellings are rented out on short-term basis. And when they're not, when she doesn't feel like dealing with. Short-term renters, she rents it out for six to eight months at a time and it creates housing, longer-term housing for people. So I, I feel like it could. It could be beneficial for people who are looking for something more stable than just a vacation. So I, I, I could see ADUs going either way, really. They're beneficial in multiple ways, I think.
It definitely adds to the mix. It's something that a lot of cities have tried to deal with in a lot of different ways. It impacts larger cities more than small cities. Small cities, it seems to help.
Yeah.
As long as you are cap it. I mean, that's where the cities have gone.
Right.
Wrong in the past, I think.
Off track.
And what they try now to deal with is the fact that they allowed it, thinking it's a great thing, but no one thought about, maybe we should start small and. See how it really impacts our community. They just allowed it and then all of a sudden everyone has an Airbnb. Everything's an Airbnb and they don't have. Housing for everyone else and they don't know how to restrict it.
Can't put that toothpaste back in the tube.
It's like advertisement for our town, you know, they come in and stay for thirty days and get to see how it's like to live here and they might move here.
They might move here. And we might have more housing to accommodate them.
Okay.
So the next item on the agenda, ordinance penalties, was, was that with regard to Mr. Tyrell or was there something?
No, this is, um, in our, uh, fee structure.
Oh, okay.
Um, we removed all the, um. We, we removed all the references to penalties at, at specific dollar amounts. And we say they're now being referenced by resolution. So, um, the result, what you're going to see is basically the same penalties that we currently have. Uh, did you, uh, but probably. And that's just to make sure that we, as we make the changes, um. The penalties don't go away, right? But, um. I think some of those, because it's being done by resolution this way, that, uh. You might want to have an opportunity to sit down and review those. I mean, for instance, right now, a five hundred dollar ticket for parking and, um. We've talked about that is a little steep.
Yeah.
Um, there's other cities that have said, your first violation is twenty-five dollars. But your second violation is a hundred dollars.
Right.
Okay, and others actually have a, a, a sliding scale depending on the severity of what it is. So I think what I'm going to do this next time is give you the resolution to add those fees or have a hearing to make sure that we have public comment on it. But not change them, but give you some options as to what other cities I've seen. I've seen some very. Nice ways of doing it. So like, I like the idea of your first penalty is, you know, essentially a slap on the wrist and you have to pay us twenty-five bucks because. Because Dawn had to write it all up. But the second violation is more. And what that is, I'm not, you know, I think that's your decision as to what seems reasonable. I know councillor, you had mentioned that when this was done before, um, basically the five hundred dollar fee was just because you needed to get through it. And that's what was assessed or.
Yeah, they just threw numbers at it.
Okay. Rather than being thoughtful. So I'll give you some examples of what, how other cities have structured it. Um, parking is one of those things that, you know, they adopt the same scale. The DOJ does have some say in how we.
Yeah, it's not, we talked about that there could be like a class A, class B, class C violations. And then have a variation for the judge, you know, so the judge has wiggle room for depending on what's going on.
And that's what our judge just says that, you know, he says, yes, it's max mine five hundred, but I don't know what that means. He says, is that one dollar or is it five hundred? And he, he would like some more guidance.
Well, you can do the class A violations, yeah, range between twenty-five and five hundred.
I've seen some parking incidents where people park. And a foot of their vehicles out in the traffic lane of ninety-nine.
Oh, yeah, like this morning.
Yeah, and I think that instant five hundred bucks.
Yeah, that's pretty dangerous.
But other, other parking things, I could see twenty-five bucks. I'd see an escalation and I would say. Second one within a month or second one within six months, something like that.
And we have several, not one or two, I think three, that actually provide for jail time. Which I don't think is legal, um, which probably needs to be removed. No, not for parking, just for other violations. I, I don't think.
It's pretty steep.
Yeah, I, number one, I don't think for city ordinance anymore unless we have our own little pokey down there. Um.
Get that bond.
Get that bond that, that we have the ability to do that. But we actually, our, our code. Does call at several instances for jail time. Now, that's not going to happen with Benton County. I mean, there's just no way. Because these are not huge things. Some of them are for peddlers. And I think.
Eighteen hundreds?
Yes.
I mean, if we have our own little police station, can we just have it be like a, like two desks? One for the, one for the.
Have any of you been in our?
The chief or one for the desk or whatever. And then have one of those cages in the corner.
We do have a secure room.
Oh, my gosh.
Secure room with a bench in it and a little window so the officer can look in at you.
Put the glass so I can't break it.
Horrifying. It sounds so scary.
They even have.
I, I do need to get them a different toilet though. They requested a larger, they, what they have in there is a mini toilet.
Of many.
Full gear on.
No.
That's terrible.
Sorry, does the, the ordinance penalties then refer to the fee schedule or is that, okay, so that's just.
Transferred the penalties from the being a set dollar amount as an ordinance.
Yeah.
To set by resolution.
Got it.
That's, that sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, any other questions on that before we move on? Okay, review of business for our council meeting on July twenty-second. Uh, public hearing on short-term rentals. We've talked about that. We'll be doing that. Uh, resolution transferring funds for beginning fund balances for the new fiscal year.
Right, yeah, this is our final adjustments to the beginning fund balances. And we have to do that by resolution.
Uh, direction to staff regarding property at the top of Main Street.
Um, that is, uh, we'll do that in public session, but this is the property that's, uh. It's property, it's not a street, it's not an easement, it is actual city property.
Remember where that vault is?
It's being, uh, no.
Oh, this is that driveway.
It's actually being used a driveway for three homes.
Okay.
And, and this is at, just asking you to think about it and how do we deal with that?
Right.
Um, we talked about solutions from just deeding it over to the three properties. Um, another option would be saying, okay, fine, you're using it, but a city property, so you're going to have to pay for the maintenance of it.
Is there any legal issues if we deed it over to them?
No.
Okay.
There isn't. It's vacating property. It's, it's actually in our, or it's, is actually in our charter and ordinance on the process.
Can we s- or can we see any problems of how we split that?
It would need to be done equally since all three.
Right, what is, we need a surveyor.
Right.
What I'm saying is that if we split it three ways. They're all three going to still use it.
Of course.
And what's going to happen if they have squabbles between them? It's not going to be, it's going to be out of our hands.
Between them.
No, it'll, it would probably be that they each own a part of it and then there'd be some kind of shared easement or some, something that's written up.
It would just be like the library would be an easement.
There is. To be used as access forever. Okay.
Who are, who are the owners that would be affected?
This is another level of question I have for our attorney, um, that I've already given her. So I'm stacking things up on her plate.
Yeah.
But it's a good question for her to, to do that. It's already been done once on the street right below. It's a private driveway. It looks like a street, but it's not. Um, it's been split three ways.
Okay.
No, it's not. It's split two ways. Because I live right below it.
Well.
Local expert.
Is it two ways and then there's some sort of easement allowing access for the person at the back?
One is in the front and they have their own.
Oh, they have their own, okay.
Oh, okay.
Do you live on the corner?
Yeah, this is, so this is.
Do they have their own?
That's Lane.
So it's just between those two.
Ommerson, yeah, Paul. Yeah, so this is how they split that. Oh, yeah, because th- this home here is, comes out to the front. That's, that's correct. And this is the property we're looking at right here. So this is split, this is, so this property here, Lane, um, comes out to the front. And, uh, this property, uh, Yulyn. Uses this section of what we would call a street. Then Paul Ommerson, um, has this section right here. And this is the property we're looking at right here.
So.
Look out.
How many homes would be affected?
Three.
There'd be three homes.
The two to the right use the other and have their own.
Right.
Access.
So this house here, this is, uh, loving. Uh, her front door faces this direction. Okay. Um, this is the garage for this one and this is a garage here. Okay, um, this is the garage for this one and this is a garage here.
And our understanding, or I think our understanding is that they want, they would love to have that property deeded to them, but they would still expect the city to maintain it, which we would not do.
Been, what I understand has been talked about for years. Um, Becky has um, asked. Just use the word ask, has asked the city to take care of it. It's your property, take care of it. If it were a street and we decided to turn it into a street. Okay, I can, I can see that.
Yeah.
Can we write them a letter and ask them to write back and say what they'd like us to do so we can get a clear understanding of what they expect out of us?
Well, two of the property owners would like us to take care of it. I don't know about the third.
And take care of it means to maintain it?
Yes.
Put the oil on the gravel and.
Do it, keep it weed free and all that.
They want us to deed the property and split it amongst them, but still take.
No, two, two, two of them do not want us to do that.
Okay.
Two of them want us to to take care of it for the city. It's our property, take care of it.
Well, in cities where I've lived before, when the city comes in and has to do a chip seal on the road, all the property owners paid by the footage on their boat. Wasn't.
Yeah, it was an improvement district and that's in our code as well to do that.
Yeah, so if they want us to take care of it, let them know what it's going to cost.
Yeah, it is. It's not, it's it's not up to our standards for a road. So yeah, that's what I said, when you said the fees is the other part is you, if you're going to maintain it, you need to pay for it. We already have that in place up here with the Habitat for Humanity House. So um, up in this area, I think I'm right, yeah, so. So this is Ninth Street and this, we take care of it up to this point and we have a letter because there's only one house. This is the Habitat for Humanity House that accesses this. We said to them in a letter that, okay, you can use this as a driveway and and improve it for, as a driveway for your use, but you have to take care of it. Number one, and number two, um, it could turn into a street at a time and if it does, you have to pay for the improvements. That that's the letter that they have on file. That's part of their deed.
Is that a full width? That's not a full width there either.
Uh, this is, this would be, uh, this street here would be one of our, a minimal. It it is a minimal width street. It would, it would be, it's still in our TSP, but it's the smaller. This is a full width street. This is Ninth. Um, here, and we do this, where this is where we put that fire hydrant, was right there.
That's to flush that area?
Right, to flush this area out. Um, and this is a gravel road here. It has currently grass, one of the ones that we, we um, well.
Lingnan, it's not all.
Excuse me, Lingnan, yes, thank you. Spirits of of fir trees and anything else.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we know, we can certainly do that and and um, so let, I'll tell you what I'll do. I will talk to our attorney about that. Um, we do have special, it's in our code, our ordinance is already that if we come by and chip seal or whatever, we can assess homeowners for it. I mean, it's not as though um, the city cannot. There is a process to do that though, and it is a process where the homeowners can say no. So it's not like it's automatic.
It might be nice just so that they can see all the options.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? Like, if we keep it and we maintain it, this is what happens and then you'll get it, you know, charged this. If you, you know.
No, that's fine. No, that's, that's great feed. That's the feedback. That's, that's what I'm.
Yeah, if you.
That's what I'm asking.
But then they, that way they can make a.
Yeah.
They can do their own due diligence with the information provided. I think that would be.
Yeah.
It's being used, though they're using it currently, right?
There's right, this is the only way they have access to their homes.
They're the only ones that use it, I'm assuming.
Yeah, now this is, this is being used as a common driveway parking area for these three residences.
The eleven, the ten eleven, they actually have to go on to twenty five oh one's property to get to theirs, don't they? Isn't there trees at the end?
No, the trees right here.
Okay.
And they use this part right here.
Okay.
You you can see where their, how their driveway goes up and this one does curve up into here. And uh, Loving's parked right in front of their house in this area here.
We'll give them some options and see what they want to do.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to give them two options. Option A is door number one. Is we can, the city can deed the property to you and it's yours to maintain and take care of, you know, for an easement that we'll place on there. You'll share the cost i- if equally. Um, the second option is the city retains it, however, the city um, will uh, maintain it, but you will have to pay for that uh, service.
Well, the city, can we charge them for the, for its use too? I mean, if they're using it.
We can charge them, but there'd be an inference that um, we pay for the maintenance. So that's what they basically would do.
Okay.
Yeah, gotcha.
Is um.
Understood.
We give them use of it, but we would be responsible for the maintenance of it. And then we would charge them for that maintenance.
Okay.
So the city didn't, isn't, isn't, so that those would solve the city's issues.
Okay, I guess we'll see what happens. All right. Uh, any other items from you, Steve?
No, it's been.
What about counsel?
I have a question. Are we going to try another recruitment for the second vacant um, the grounds utility workers position?
Yeah, I'm I'm actually um, working with OAWU right now. OAW's Association of Water Utilities, they have their own, I'm working with them because they, I spoke with Sam Waller, he's one of their senior people and he is the one that's responsible for keeping in contact with everyone and anyone in Oregon who fills utility positions. So he has an ear to the heartbeat of what cities needed one. And so um, I'm working with him on the job description.
Nice.
He says that um, there's some things you can improve on it that might help you. He's also knows people that are, want to move to areas that are smaller or small system water operators that are working in small, small water systems to be like that fifteen homes in Alpine that are connected to a common well.
Wow.
They need a small systems water operator. It's not like what a grade two, it's below a grade one.
Yeah.
But they, they're not finding advancement.
Right.
Possibilities. They want to move to a system where they can get better training, all that. And so um, I think working with them is a, and getting it posted on their site is a great idea. So that's what I'm working on right now.
Wonderful.
That was just contracted.
Yeah, there we go.
Let us know when interviews are.
I will.
Just like the one in Corvus.
Just like.
Yeah, Papa's Road and War Road and fifty third.
Yeah.
You still had a, it's on water treatment.
It is.
Okay, any other comments, questions?
Benton County came out and put their little speed buggy thing out right by my house. And everybody's going so slow.
Do you want to buy that and keep it?
Yes, I do.
I will mention that Sheriff Van Arstall um, gave his uh, and his staff's full hearted approval uh, and concurrence that the speed are there on territorial needs to be changed from thirty five to twenty five. I needed his recommendation to go um, to the state of Oregon. Uh, state of Oregon will listen to the city and not ha- and if there's concurrence, they do not have to do the studies or anything else.
Really?
If you as a private citizen request it.
Right.
They will put every roadblock in the world up again.
Oh, wow. What they told me was if they come out and do the speed study and more than eighty five percent of the cars are going faster than thirty five, they raise the speed limit and that's the way the legislature has it done in law and they don't have a choice. So we could get stuck with a higher speed limit there, which would be tragic.
Yeah.
And then it would have to go to a review board of five people, blah, 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 the thing, and then you'll drag it out, drag it out. If we go the law enforcement route and they're out there trying to do the enforcement and they're finding a lot of people speeding and stuff, then it's a little easier way to get in, so.
Cause then there's data.
Yeah.
The legislator changed it so the cities can dictate their speeds, but only the city can make that.
So if if the county into your agreement, they can basically extend out the twenty five a little bit further down territorials, basically what we're talking about.
So right now it's thirty five, as soon as you hit territorial, it's thirty five miles an hour.
Before you even get to school?
Oh, yes, it's right there. As you, as just as you turn.
Yep.
No wonder people are on my butt. I always go twenty five.
I know because there's.
So if the city requests it.
But we have a safer routes.
Their engineer can make the change.
That doesn't help if you're on the SBL password.
That's their rationale.
Okay, is that um, is that little old store that the, used to have the fly tying stuff?
Yeah, the Hair, Hair Dublin, it's down to Hair Dublin, so that section from Hair Dublin to Highway ninety nine. Is is, they're currently thirty five and that could be changed to.
And actually at my second driveway before Hairline Dublin, it actually goes to forty five right there. Like, boom, I'm not kidding you.
Oh, I know. But it's the forty five coming the other way is farther out.
Yes, way farther out.
Yeah.
It is.
But as soon as you ascend limits, it goes to forty five.
I always slow down because I know there's kids all in there.
I'm just kidding. I don't do that.
Anyway, so.
But if you are going over a hundred, I'm going to give you the stink eye. Not gonna lie, you won't see it, but I'm out there giving you the stink eye.
The the city has filed with the state.
Okay, very good.
Five and a half months last time.
Yeah, he said it was going to be a while before he could make it out.
They must really know when the police aren't here because I still see him going forty five miles an hour all the way up past Dollar General.
Actually, when I'm coming in town of late, coming, going south, everyone has slowed down the twenty five. Going north, not the case.
Saturday after the fourth of July, this this Saturday.
Yeah, they always got my butt because all these driving slow.
I was, of course, I was, I was in early. I thought I'd been coming in around six.
Full size semi truck.
Now, the semis are the ones that are, I told the the sheriff, the semis are the ones that aren't complying by it.
Yeah.
They have a lot more inertia to try to stop.
Right, well, I, some have a lot done.
Yeah, and it's amazing what five miles an hour will do with inertia.
Yeah.
Well, particularly a.
Pedestrian vehicle, just so you guys know, from twenty to twenty five, it jumps to like thirty percent uh, death to sixty percent.
Yep.
And at thirty, it goes to eighty percent death.
Sure.
Yep.
Forces what mass times velocity squared, so.
Yeah, exactly it.
He's a mathematician.
Physics.
I like that.
I I still remember throwing things up in the air and we timed them to see how far we got them up near. Physics class was so fun. Okay, I think we're done.
Yeah, I gotta.
Okay, thank you all. We are done. Good night, everyone. Have a lovely evening, everyone.